Hi, it's Pam on June 2nd. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Committee of the Whole Riverside District 96 Board of Education. May I have a roll call, please?
Randy Brackway, Sherry Cliber.
Here.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Here.
Rachel Morella.
Here.
Linda Murphy.
Here.
Rich Regan.
Present.
And Jeff Miller.
Here.
I'd like to invite everyone to stand and join me in the pleasure of the meeting. My pleasure, the agents.
Pleasure, the agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the Board of Education, I just first like to apologize for the change in time for this meeting. There are a lot of things we need to discuss later in the special meeting regarding contact negotiations, so we appreciate your understanding. There's no public comments, I assume? I'd like to begin education portion of this meeting. Before I begin, I'd just like to mention, I and a few other board members had the recent opportunity to tour each of the five schools in our district. I want to thank the building principals for taking time to provide a closer look both at facilities and classroom instruction. It was wonderful to see child-centered instruction, energetic teaching, engaged students, appropriate uses of technology, and dedicated volunteers, and I'm excited to see our progress in the future and look forward to seeing our district continue to grow and flourish. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Brian Giannan, who will begin our update with PARA, the Performance Evaluation Reform Act.
All right. I've actually done a change in order a little bit.
Okay.
I wasn't sure at the time when we first scheduled the meeting if I was going to be able to get our RTI data to spring organized, together, ready to go. I tried. It's really hot data right now, meaning that, you know, there's probably a couple scores that aren't in there yet, and they're, it may not be 100% accurate at the moment because it was a quick turnaround, but I'm very confident that it's very reflective of where we are as a district about how it's running now. In your red folders there, there's a whole bunch of other charts and graphs that I created for our type purposes. I don't have those to show up here because I think they, this might be more than you care to know or need to know or want to know, but it's there if you're interested. So, basically, I think we have a lot to celebrate. Just like a figure of a, okay. Okay, so, these are our district readings scores, and basically, this graph is not in there because this is not as detailed. These are our district RTI, Tier 3, the amount of students in the district that were in Tier 3 in the fall. We had 97 students in the fall in reading. This is reading. Then in the winter, we had 98, and this is when we decided to add the two new reading interventionists. I'm not going to make a staffing recommendation tonight because I think that there's a lot more that we need to look at, because along with the two reading interventionists, that was extremely helpful. We also had a year to get into our new curriculum. We also had a year for the kids to adjust to our new curriculum, so there's a lot of other factors that I think we need to look at. But I'm very pleased to say that from the winter to the spring, we are now down to 56 students in Tier 3, receiving Tier 3, our test services and reading. This is when the curriculum getting tougher, the standards getting more complex, the benchmarks getting higher. We've gone down from 97 during the school year to 56 students in the whole district that received Tier 3 services. So, I think that's a big celebration for our staff. Now, this can be a little deceiving here, because you look at Tier 2, and I try to keep the scales the same just for comparative purposes. Tier 2, you might look and wonder and say, wow, there's this great drop, there's this big drop in Tier 3. Why doesn't, you know, how come we don't see that in Tier 2? The main reason is because we currently only, well, we currently have 56 students in Tier 3, right? We started with 97. Those kids, as they make progress, typically will roll into Tier 2. So, it's actually not a bad sign to see that Tier 2 numbers are fairly stable, because what that means is, here we're adding 41 students, running 41 students into Tier 2, and yet Tier 2 still went down by seven kids. So, it's actually, is a good sign. Of course, we want all these numbers to go down, but we've, we're happy with the progress, especially with all the changes that have happened this year. They talk about an implementation dip, when you're changing so many things at once. I'm hoping we'll pass that dip. And again, these scores are not just MAP scores. These are a combination of AIMS Web, MAP, and something else course. So, we look at three pieces of data.
What was the first one?
AIMS Web.
AIMS Web, MAP, and what was the third?
Something else. It's a, it's a one-minute assessment done one-on-one.
Okay. And are they all, all of those done, how many times a year are each of those done?
Three.
All three of them are done?
Yeah, all done on a fall winner in this room.
And then, just again, just to refresh my memory here, Tier 3, Tier 2, and Tier 1, I guess which tier needs the most intervention?
Tier 3.
Okay.
Yes, yes, Tier 3. We don't have Tier 1 out here because Tier 1 is your general education classroom.
Okay.
But the nice thing is, is that with Tier 3, where it's at right now, and all the, you know, and the number of kids have probably moved from Tier 3 to Tier 2, that means that a number of students, quite a number of students moved from Tier 2 to Tier 1 as well, which is where we want, you know, all of our kids to be. So, that's, that's just reading at a glance, as I said, there's more information in the red folders. And this is math. Now, math, we had big intervention this year as well. We have added three math interventionists. And you, we'll see here that Tier 3 students, in the fall, we had 73, this is as a whole district. In the winter, we had 62. In the spring, we're down to 37. So, again, now, us-
Is this slide inable, or not?
No, no.
Okay.
Those are more detailed. This is in, this will be workable.
Okay.
So, you know, that's exactly the trend that you want to see. And again, you look at Tier 2, we have 36 more students that moved out of Tier 3. So, most likely, again, we didn't have time to do a student-by-student analysis yet, but most likely those students move into Tier 2. Some of them will move all the way to Tier 1. The fact that our Tier 2 numbers have still gone down is a good sign, because those students in Tier 2 moved into Tier 1. So, I'm, you know, we can always do better. I mean, I'm not definitely saying that we can't do better, but I, I'm happy with the progress. And I think we've, you know, this is what we want to see. We want to see kids moving tiers, and we want to see them moving that way.
And what specific actions did you feel helped accelerate this trend or make this happen?
Very good question, and it's hard to answer right now without, like, really digging into the data and digging into, like, the groups that the students were in and the services that they would provide to student-by-student. But I think the additional, I mean, supports helped, but I also think that the pressure on development was very beneficial. I think that the new, the new curriculum, although it still needs a lot of work, I think the expectations were higher, and I think that as staff and students got more familiar with the new curriculum over time and the expectations, they, you know, they started to perform at higher levels. I also think that we paid a strong focus this year, and I think Randy and other members as well, you know, on our RTI services. And we actually, this year, were able to work with students that otherwise wouldn't have qualified, they were kind of on the bubble, and we were able to provide them additional supports. So, you know, I think that really helped students, especially at the Tier 2 level.
Do you think, or does the data exist to sort of get more specific with the actions that help with this progress?
It will exist, yeah. I mean-
Oh, it doesn't now, but it will?
It doesn't, well, I mean, it-
Well, let's put it this way. You said the services that each child was provided, is that easy, is that terribly difficult to access?
It's not easy to access, but it could be done.
Okay.
And that is just by talking through every, like, having every principal go through all their attached students and provide the services that they received. You know, another piece too that you always want to look at, and our PARA is, our new PARA plan, you know, will require this too, is that you also look at the program the students were in, the instructor that provided the services, and the amount of services that the students, you know, received. So, there's kind of, there's a lot of different pieces to look at. So, at this point, it's really hard to isolate one or two of them. And sometimes, I'm not going to say this is a perfect storm, because we can always do better, but sometimes it's just, it's a combination of the interventions that you put together as well.
Could you just, in a nutshell, just run through, say, a Tier 3 intervention?
Question.
Sure, for, for reading intervention?
Yeah, and then again, for math.
Yeah.
And how we're, how we did it this year, and maybe how that's an improvement from the year past, and what we might expect for Tier 3, you know, not numbers, but I'm talking about the type of intervention that's under-
Sure.
That is given.
Sure. So, for Tier 3 in ELA or reading, the type of intervention, you know, depends on the skill that the students may have fallen out of. So, for example, if it's a fluency skill, you will have a group of students that are working with a teacher on fluency. Fluency is basically reading orally, reading with expression, recognizing words, thinking of recognized word patterns so they can read, you know, fluently. And we have different resources that we can provide for those. Some of them are connected to a program that we own, some of them are connected to some of the interventions that we put in solution. So, it all kind of depends, but it's important that when we're working on fluency, that what is, teachers will work with the student is they'll work at their instructional level.
I guess, guess what I'm trying to get a handle on is how many interventions a week for-
All the numbers.
For how long?
Tier 3 should be every day. In addition to their, so, kids are not pulled out of their, or they should not, to my knowledge, are not pulled out of their core programming. So, for example, a Tier 3 student has the 90-plus minutes of literacy in the classroom, right? Then about 30 minutes a day, they will be, they will receive additional services from an RTI teacher. Or it's not, I mean, it depends, in the junior high, it could be from the classroom teacher who's providing that kind of service.
So, that's, that's-
That's Tier 3.
That's after school?
No, it's during the school day.
During the school?
Yeah.
So, they fit in 30 minutes, where?
They won't, now, that's always the tough part, but they won't be pulled out of ELA, and they won't be pulled out of math, and we try not to pull them out of science or soul studies, at least at a consistent basis. But sometimes it's kind of a, like a juggling schedule to make it happen. At the junior high, there's other opportunities, like even though they have an RTI class built into their school day, they also could, you know, be providing services and advisory as well. So, and that also depends on the student's schedule and the group of students. Now, a Tier 2 intervention is two to three times a week, depending on what the students' needs are. Again, it's very skill-based, so we'll teach a lot of comprehension group that are focusing comprehension, reading at their instructional level, which is about, the instructional level is, it's the level in which they, they will need, they need some support in order to be successful, but it's not at the level of frustration. So, the difference is, if you're reading at your, if you're reading at your individual level, like your solitary level, you would give students tax if they're a very successful that is at their level, but they might not need additional supports for the reading. The instructional level is kind of that bridging level, and then you have, and then the goal is that that instructional level increases, and then that bridge keeps being built. So, and the intervention's about the same for math, as far as time. Tier 3 students, the goal is to see Tier 3 students every day. Tier 2 students, yeah.
Every day?
Yeah.
Okay. And from the year past, or the previous year, there was, that's a significant-
Oh, absolutely.
Up gain, right? Or uptick?
Absolutely. Well, in the past, we didn't have any math interventionists, so I think we can just, you know-
So, we went from zero to every day now?
Yes. In the past, our math RTI really consisted of data analysis. We had, I'm sorry?
It's interesting. Do you have the similar plot for last year when there was no intervention for math?
I do, but I don't have it with me right now. So, I mean, so basically, we had RTI, people that were given the responsibility of math RTI, and really because they were full-time classroom teachers, what their responsibility really was, was analyzing the data for the students, but we didn't necessarily have the time to do the interventions. So, that was a big difference. And then in ELA, we had interventionists, but we added two this school year.
We added two more.
We added two more. Now, granted, because of the need this school year, because of the new curriculum, because of the increased benchmarks, we had more students that weren't in RTI before that were in RTI now. So, even those numbers comparatively are going to be a little bit different next year because we're including a whole other group of kids that before were kind of those students that were achieving within the grade level range, but on the lower end of that grade level.
The charts that you have for last year, are they in board book, and are they presented to the board, do you think?
Yeah.
They might be in one of the education committee meetings?
They should be. They would be made last year.
So, the spring education committee?
Yeah.
Might be interesting to see exactly the same, the same plot for last year, where you just group it into three, three groups, basically, for math.
Yeah.
I'm kind of curious to see if you'd see a similar trend or if there's no trend.
Well, there ought to certainly be a trend in math, because we went from no intervention to-
If there's an effect from this, from this RTI, then you would, you'd expect to see a bigger trend now than, than back then?
Sure. We would, we would certainly hope so.
That's kind of what I'm asking, I guess.
Yeah, you want to, you want to see the little ticks on the chart.
Right.
Yeah. Very good.
Yeah, and I mean, I could probably computer downstairs, but I could get that right away as well.
I'm curious.
I don't think it was as significant beginning, but I don't look forward to that.
So, next year, are you recommending similar levels of intervention?
I started today saying that I'm not going to make a recommendation tonight, that that is too new. I just got all this to present today because I know that we wanted to present it, but it's really hot for us. So, there's, there are other things I need to look at, and I want to work with PARA to help make those decisions.
But I'm talking about, like, interventions, like, during the day for the students.
Oh, yeah.
Not necessarily for the staffing level.
I got it. Yes, yes. You know, absolutely. It's always, it's always difficult to find the right time for interventions for the kids, but it's essential. I mean, there's also other opportunities to look at after-school programming, but you need to work with the kids when they're here, when you know they're going to be here, and when you can target those skills. So, yeah.
Very good.
Okay, if there are no other comments, will you be providing your PARA updated this time, Brian?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Okay, so in board book, I included the current professional practice plan, and it's quite, it's quite extensive, so I didn't put it out there. That's the first half of a PARA plan, that's the half of the plan that was presented to staff, May 18th. Along with the PowerPoint that's in board book, that's the complete PowerPoint, I just thought I would just, this is just a brief, because you know, me and talking in 45 minutes. This is just kind of a brief overview of what the professional practice part of the PARA looks like. Now, again, this does not include the student growth piece. That's, that's something that the district will need to work on next year.
Did you, did you know I was going to ask that at some point?
I had a feeling you were, but yeah. Well, it's a good question, though. I mean, because this is, I mean, it's kind of nice of introducing it one at a time, because I think this is easier to, for everybody to kind of grasp and understand and be introduced to as far as the new system. But that is something that the group will have to work on. We have a couple of new teachers that are going to be joining the parent committee for next year to really focus on the student growth piece. So, this piece, the professional practice, is really, is based on the teachers' practice, based on four domains, which I'll go through in a minute. But again, does not include the student growth piece yet. So, the timelines for our non-tenured, they will have observations yearly, they will have two formal observations. And your two formal observations are your observations when you have a pre-meeting, about what the lesson's going to look like, then you have a lesson, and then you have a post-meeting and talk about, you know, talk about the lesson. But there's, there's a reflection piece in the new plan that's, that's going to look a little bit different. There is at least one informal. There can be many, many informals. These are minimums. The informal is when the principal or supervisor or evaluator, you know, kind of goes in the classroom for 15, 20 minutes, doesn't, doesn't let the teacher know, and kind of sees live teaching in action without knowing what was planned ahead of time. I have found those to be very effective. And I've also found too, though, you know, I think sometimes it can sound kind of intimidating to say that there's, there's no cap on how many. There's also a reality of how many times principals are going to be able to do this, but, you know, I have a teacher, college principal, that said to me, "Brian, that didn't go well. You know, can you come back in?" "Oh, sure." You know what I mean? I mean, absolutely. And so, it kind of keeps that conversation open, because it happens. A summative evaluation is the evaluation over the entire school year. This is, this is where you get your rating at the end of the year. And professional growth plan in mentoring. And that, that piece of it is, if, if staff, it's more or less goal-setting. So, staff members will, you know, will set goals on where they want to grow and work with the principals. The timeline for tenured staff, staff that have been here for four years, have been around 10 years, a little bit different. They'll have a formal every other year, informal, one every two years. And so, again, this allows the evaluator to actually come into the classroom to do it, some type of evaluation or observation every year, if they'd like, which our new system doesn't, our old system doesn't, doesn't have. Summative, one every, ones every two years. And then professional growth begins in years without a formal observation. So, again, your professional growth plan is your goal-setting. When you're not being observed, you sit with your principal and set goals, and work that way. So, there's always some part of professional growth, an expectation. Okay. Earlier, I said that the professional practice is based on four domains. It's based on the Charlotte-Danleyson framework. We have not trained staff into the framework, so that's going to be something in the fall that we really want to focus on. Because this plan will work if our staff are comfortable with it, the staff's supportive, and the staff know exactly what their administrative expectations are, and the administrators know exactly what their staff's expectations are for them. It's, it's a partnership. It's a professional growth plan. So, domain one is planning and preparation, okay? So, all certified staff will be evaluated in domain one. And there's more categories, but this is just kind of a snapshot. It focuses on, do you understand your subject matter? Okay? Do you understand ways to teach the subject matter? Okay? How are you planning? Am I, are you, are we seeing differentiation in your plans? Are we seeing how you're going to approach students who already know this material? Like, what do you do if they already know? What do you do if this is going to be a challenge for them? How are you going to provide that scaffolding? Do you know your students' development? Okay, so again, do you plan for how you know your students are developing? What are their needs? And again, your students' needs. So, this is, this is the planning piece. When you go in for an observation, so I go in, and I'm going in for a formal or informal observation, I'm going in for an informal observation, I'm not going to evaluate on the planning. I'm not seeing the planning, okay? What I'm seeing, when I'm in the classroom, is domain two, or domain two and domain three. This is the classroom environment, okay? Every, every observation in the classroom, your administrator will be looking at classroom environment, okay? Is there a environment of respect? Okay? And there's rubrics that kind of help, help teachers and administrators understand all this. Are you connecting with your students? Are you creating a place where learning is valued for kids? Okay? Again, it looks very subjective, but when you get into the Danleyson framework and rubrics, which is in your packet, you'll kind of see what this looks like at different levels. And then, are you clearly conveying your expectations? Okay? That is really, how do you communicate with your students? Okay? Do, are you using, I know we talk about jargon a lot, right? Are you using jargon that the students can't follow? Are you, are you communicating with them as if, you know, they're five years old when they're, when they're fourth graders? I mean, so, there's, there's a lot involved with that, because that will affect your classroom environment. I mean, if you're treating them like that, they're going to, you know, respond differently, and it's going to affect their engagements. So, that's, that's the classroom environment. Now, one thing that we're working on, is especially in the beginning of all this change, is we want principals to be in classrooms as much as possible. That is, to me, the most important part of their job.
Principals.
Right? Absolutely. They need to know what's going on, and be there to support. We don't want staff to be wondering, are they doing, you know, an informal on you right now? Are they doing an observation? Because that creates, we don't want to create any barriers between administrators and staff in the classroom. This is the fourth piece. So, we are working on some kind of signal. When I was, when I was principal, if I came in with my computer, then the staff knew that that was an informal observation. It turned into a big joke, you know? Because, because I forget, sometimes I had it in my hand, and they'd come and look at me, and I'd like hold it up in the air and say, where do you want me to put it? You know, like, I'm, I just have it with me. But they appreciated that, because at least in the beginning, it kind of let them know why you were there. They don't know you're coming, so it's still informal, but at least when you're there, they know.
Or why you weren't there, or-
Why, exactly.
Or what you weren't, what wasn't going to happen while you were there.
Exactly. And sometimes too, for principals, like, when they're doing the observation, you know, it's so hard not to help kids, you know what I mean? But it's nice for the teachers and others, like, I might not be able to go over to Bobby right away because I'm doing an observation. Sorry, Bobby.
Bobby.
Brian, are ops have, have observations on a regular basis always been part of, I'll call them the informal or the formal observations, always been part of a principal's role in the school?
The formal observation has.
And, and so, what, how is PARA, what is, how is PARA impacting something that's been happening?
So, that part of PARA is somewhat similar, except for, you know, PARA will require you to, our PARA plan will require you to have a pre-conference on the formal observations, which we typically had, you know?
Yeah.
In our plan at RAN, but not all plans did. A pre-conference and a post-conference after the observation, or a reflective conference. There's also some stuff in our PARA plan about, you know, when staff will get their notes by, so staff aren't waiting forever. And it's not just, hey, I'm going to hand, you know, I'm going to hand David the most observation, but I'm going to sit with David, and we're going to talk about it, and I'm going to hear what David thinks about the observation, and we're going to have a conversation about it. So, it changes how the formal observations might be approached, but the formal observation was there, right? The informal observation was not.
Okay.
So, we didn't have any, you know, in any system where principals can just kind of do, I don't want to say surprise, but, you know, hey, here I am. You know, and sometimes those are the most amazing things that you see in the classroom too. I can't tell you how many times I've been in a classroom observing a teacher, and I know that if I didn't sit down with them ahead of time, and even though I tell them, if you need to stray from your lesson plans, please do. That's good teaching. I know you do it, right? If your students need more support and they're not getting it, stop. You know, do what you always do. But something about the formal observation, they put it on paper and they hand it to you? A lot of times, they feel like, no matter what you tell them, they have to keep doing that. And it becomes a very unauthentic, if you think I made up a word, you know, experience for, for the administrator and for the teacher. for the administrator and for the teacher. So the informals kind of help along with that, too. And then as they get more comfortable, you know, hopefully the formals will be a little more comfortable as well.
Are the summative evaluations new with para?
No, the way we go about them is different. We're going to use all these domains. But there was always a summative evaluation, and that was where you got your rating at the end of the year.
Yes, and are they self-rating? Are they rating and evaluating themselves?
We've talked a lot about coming to the summative evaluation with the rubric.
Yes, yes.
And self-evaluating. My experience is that that's how we did it.
I think it's extremely useful, just for self-reflection and comparative when you have your discussion. I didn't know if that was in this PDF document.
Well, and a lot of times, you will see that, you know, the teachers are harder on themselves.
Oh, certainly.
Not always, but, you know, and that's just, that's part of that reflection piece. I always just tell them, "You can't talk me down," you know? But, you know, if you provide the evidence, you might be able to talk me out, but don't work, you can't talk me down. So domain three is instruction. And Charlotte-Danison will say that, I don't want to say nothing else matters, but you're not going to get the results that you are looking for unless you have this. That is the anchor of the entire framework. Because if students are engaged, you're doing everything right. Right? They're on task, they're engaged. If they're engaged, you are meeting them at their level. Right? Because, again, I should say, there's difference between on task and engagement, but they're truly engaged and vested. So instruction is, how well do you communicate the purpose of the lesson? How well do you use your language with your students? How well do you explain and demonstrate? How well do you ask different level questions? Okay? So we don't always want to know, like, when did Tommy go to school? Well, he left for school at 18. That's a very concrete answer, right? We need to be asking different level critical thinking questions as well. Generate a genuine discussion. Okay? If you generate a genuine discussion, there should be a time when the kids take that over. Right? And as a teacher, you're kind of facilitating that discussion. It's a high-level discussion, and once the kids, again, that's engagement, kids are able to take it over. You ensure that all students are heard. So what are you doing besides calling and bopping because his hand is up? Right? What are you doing with, you know, Brian, who was looking out the window? Okay? How are you going to know that I'm following? Challenge students to make their thinking visible. This was huge on the part of test as well. Okay? A lot of times, we know the answer, but we can't necessarily think exactly as to why that is the answer. And when you can speak of the why, you're showing an understanding of the entire development of what you actually got, of where you got to. And being able to do that, break things down that way, is a very helpful skill for kids and adults. Engagement, and then structure and pace of your lessons. Okay? And again, the structure and pace is not based on what's on that paper necessarily. It's the teaching, this is in the classroom. And then domain four is professional responsibilities. This is a time when I would always tell staff, "Bring me your evidence." Okay? I'm not going to see this in the classroom. There might be things that I miss. Bring me your evidence when we meet for responsibilities. Let's have a conversation about this. Okay? If I need to learn more about you, I want to make sure I'm able to do that before I do my evaluation. So do you think about how your lessons went? Okay? When you have your reflective conference, you'll be able to talk to staff about lessons. Okay? How are you thinking about it? What could you have done differently? What would you have differently, done differently? What were you really proud of? Make suggestions about ways to improve your lesson. Okay? Again, you know, I think sometimes we look at administrators and we sometimes, I think, make the mistake to say that they are the, they are the all-know when it comes to, you know, great instruction and responsibilities and stuff like that. And really, I don't know if any supervisor is the all-know in anything. Teachers have a lot of expertise, and it's very important that they are able to help themselves grow by being reflective on how to improve their lessons, along with working with their administrator. And we need to give them opportunities to do that. Keep records effectively. How well are you communicating with families? And again, this might be something where you might ask for evidence. Right? I don't need to see all the emails, but, you know, can you show me how often you've been emailing so-and-so and so-and-so? Or do you have a phone, do you have a phone log? Or, I mean, how are we sure that you're, you know, can I see your newsletters? Can, you know, I'm going to check out your website, just making sure that we're communicating with families. How are you supporting other colleagues? How are you making a contribution to your school or district? Okay? So again, this is going beyond the school. How are you supporting the district's goals as well? Seeking opportunities for development. Are you identifying those yourself? And display honesty, integrity, and confidence in others. So those are just some examples of domain four. But you can see how some of these staff members may want to come in with some evidence of their own. So then, the summative piece kind of brings it all together. Domains one and four, as I discussed, is evidence from post-observation, meetings, and goal-setting. But this is also evidence, you can also gain this evidence from other stuff throughout the school year. This plan is not embedded in these three observations, and that's how you're evaluated for the whole school year. So throughout the year, how are you showing, you know, that you're being reflective, responsive to the student needs? How have you adjusted your lesson plans? Maybe we had a conversation and say, "Hey, you ever think of doing this?" Or, you know, "I really want to see more differentiation for so-and-so." Were you reflective, and were you able to adjust those? And any optional teacher evidence provided. Domains two and three, again, in the summative, it's in your formal observation, and it's also in your informal observation. Because those are really what you're going to see in the classroom for the most part.
Brian, I have a couple of quick questions. The schedule of doing these, it's for non-tenured, what is it again, if you can remind me?
For non-tenured, it's two formal and, at least two formal and one informal.
And I mean every year, every?
Every year, I'm sorry.
For non-tenured, and then for tenured, it's every four years, every?
Every other year.
Every other year?
Yeah.
And what would be the reason you wouldn't do them more often?
You know, it's a
First of all, is it in the law?
The law is, tenured teachers must evaluate it at least every other year. Yeah. Could you do it more often? You could. You could. And we could, too. But we want to make sure we do it at least every other year. It's very time-consuming for principals, especially next year, because my recommendation is that, and everybody has volunteers, that you have one of the one principal go in and do, you know, and do an observation. So you can kind of, you know, make sure that you guys are on the same page, make sure that everything's consistent, generate a real reliability.
And the other thing is, I noticed that the dates that you deliver, at least the evaluation conference, are after the legal non-renewal date. Is that, or seem to be after the legal non-renewal date?
Which are you looking at for done?
Well, summative evaluation, I'm looking just on page 16. Non-tenured between April 15th and May 1. Isn't the date March 1 the legal non-renewal date?
It is. Two things for that. If there's a tenured teacher that we're looking at non-renewing, there's a professional development plan piece that goes into place first. And then within that professional development plan, so these days on the year. So you have very specific goals. And then within that next year, you'll have another evaluation before that March 1st date. It does, there's not going to say you can't do it before those dates, but that's
But the expectation is that there would be a development plan put together.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then you lay out those timelines very strictly in that plan. Yeah.
And then for, okay, and I noticed the dates are a little bit different for non-tenured.
Yes. Non-tenured, the non-renewal process for non-tenured is a little bit different. There, you know, there doesn't need to be a professional development plan. I mean, it can just be a non-renewal. So then you want to make sure that, you know, you hit those dates. It also helps spread out, spread it out, too.
I might make a comment about yearly evaluations for tenured staff. I think we need to, just from my experience, make sure that we provide our instructors with a level of trust, that they have demonstrated consistent instruction, professionalism, and that we give them a chance to do what they do best. So it's not, to me, necessary to be every single year when they're through with their development. So, just on my own.
I met somebody at one of these IASB conferences that asked, just because they know how time-consuming para is going to be.
Yes.
If we would, if a school would be willing to hire a consultant to come in, or an independent evaluator to come in and do it for them, I thought, I didn't know whether it'd be appropriate or not, but.
There are some schools that don't have, when you get really kind of good at this, there are some schools that don't have the building principal do the evaluation. Because it shouldn't matter who's in it, because you're looking at very targeted stuff. So it's kind of a way to say, there's going to be absolutely no bias at all in this. Somebody's going to come in, principal doesn't know me, and is going to do the evaluation because it shouldn't matter.
That's what this person thought.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't think we're there yet, but I think it's an opportunity for the future. Before I do go, I do want to just say that this, I've heard stories about, you know, kind of these PAT committees or parent committees, that they can be contentious and they can be kind of difficult committees. I just want to say that this committee was a ton of work. I mean, a ton of fun.
Close, close. Fun work.
It's the second day I've done it this week. Really. We did a ton of work, but they were a ton of fun. They were awesome. There was Bill Howe, Steve Algenas, Patty Gill, Christian Bettencourt, Larry LaFleur, Steve Druck, I talked to him myself. And it was a fun committee. And I think that fun will continue. I think you're going to have some different bench conversations when you hit the student group, but it's a good group to work with.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions, is that all you'd like to present?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Brian. Ginting and I are going to pass the gavel to Mr. Regan for our finance committee portion of the day.
Thank you, Sheri.
Do we have a question? Or we haven't got that? We did this grant results, huh?
Yep.
First item on our agenda is a presentation from Mr. Sellers on the preliminary budget.
First of all, these are delivered to your homes. Does anyone not have this? So I'm going to run through this document. Dr. Jan, I feel like we're going to have to do a different portion of the brain. He's creative side on the mundane and numerical side. We just need to walk through a process that is legally required, and how we're going to achieve it. Wanted to remind board members that we had this document, and I've shared it with the new board members. It's a document that I won't attempt to walk through this evening because that would take a long time. But it was intended to provide a backdrop and information that would, you know, basically give you the fundamentals of school finance and a feel for what the budget development process is supposed to accomplish. So starting out with the first page, the budget that, in its current draft form, is an extension of our ongoing monthly monitoring of financial results year-to-date in the current FY14 fiscal year. Excluding transfers, and I'm looking at the bottom of this first page. Excluding transfers, we were at 1.873899, is projected for June 30 that is yet to unfold. And then for FY1516, 1.958 is a positive surplus of revenues or expenditures. That's a strong fiscal position. On page two, taking the, two and three, I'm taking the two biggest components of your budget, which is property taxes and then salaries benefits. So property taxes are reflected in these, in the bar chart, net refunds. I think I've emphasized in the past that refund activity is a significant impact on the school district.
I noticed that you didn't include the special education funds in this, in these, is that, did you do that deliberately, or is that?
It's part of the educational fund.
Part of the educational fund, yeah.
So that's an improvement I could make to the title, but that title is, the special education fund is out of the educational fund. Same with the, well, TORT is running, the central fund, some school districts run TORT within the educational fund. So the next page has a typo, and I need to make my first apology of the evening. The average salary plus benefits increase is 4.64, 4.6% not 5.6%. I went back over those calculations and found the typo. But I think the point of showing these two in juxtaposed is that the school district has a fiscal challenge in aligning your salaries and benefits with growth and your primary source of revenue, which is property taxes. Salaries and benefits need to be put in the context of enrollment growth as well as inflation. We've talked about that in the past. Enrollment growth over the same years that are pictured, averaged 2.1%, so 4.6 minus 2.1 is about a 2.5% increase in salaries and benefits, which is actually positive considering that the growth rate in benefits is somewhat out of our control in medical benefits nationwide. It's been 5 to 7% as a general trend.
So your plot is kind of striking, though, because you show us our revenue's gone up by a million dollars in the last seven years in our expenses for, and the operating funds have gone up by over $3 million. So we're basically growing a lot faster in the expense side than on the revenue side, which I think was your point.
Correct, correct. School district passed a referendum in 2004, made the district stronger than I think it even anticipated. But as time has gone by, you know, we're now in 11 years past the referendum. We're looking at an alignment that seems to be of concern to the board from a fiscal management perspective. I also need to apologize because I have two page fours. So page 4B, which is the budget progress statement, is what's been in the board packet every month, and so I just want to emphasize that's been, you know, part of our development of the 1516 budget, and we're doing that, and we're currently about $400,000 better than expected, which is favorable. Pages five and six juxtapose what we were thinking and anticipating at the time of the adoption of the tax levy. Page six is what has actually happened. So it just happened, let me think, a few days ago, maybe last Friday. And the favorable result is that new property came in at 5.62 million. We were anticipating and modeling based on three-year. So we're, we were at 23.543 million as a request, and because of the significantly greater new property, we're at 23.953. It's also important to note that we anticipated a 7% reduction in EAV, down to 440 million. And instead of a 7% reduction, we're at 3%, 3.1%. So that's, that's good. We're, the school district needs a rebounding or a resumption of normality with regard to home values within our community. To show you how close we came to maxing out our tax rates, you can look at column F. Column F shows you that we were as close as you could imagine in the educational, special education, and working cash, and fire prevention, life safety. So we just made it under the wire.
But that wasn't due to, that wasn't due to our request, though. That was due to new revenue.
Yes.
Right.
New property.
Right.
The point of mentioning that is that we didn't lose out on any money.
Right.
And question was raised, well, you know, how does this, again, and we'll talk about this again when we go through the levy process. You can ask for three times the distance to the moon. That's more of a, all you're going to do is scare your taxpayers if you do. But at the end of the day, the tax cap formula will cut you off, and the formula will be what it is. And it's the National's Consumer Price Index, which is why I'm sharing that on the very next page. Page seven, I just applied myself into the next page.
I'm just going to ask a, just a real quick clarification question. You're talking about the tax levy that we voted on in December.
Correct.
This is what you're presenting.
Right.
Okay.
And the result is on page seven, I mean, page six. So that cycle is completed.
Proposed, final.
Right.
Okay.
So on page seven, I don't have good news. The tax cap had, I'm sorry, tax, the tax cap is based upon the National CPI. The National CPI ended and is impacting the 2016-17 fiscal year at 0.8%. So 17, 1718, if it were to develop exactly the way it's developing right now, would be at 0.4%. So that's So, that's, I, it's still very green. Anything can happen, but this is something that needs to be watched on a monthly basis. Because if we're getting toward month nine or month 10, and it's still pointing at 0.4%, then, well, that's going to be a fiscal condition that the school district will need to plan, and it would be, it would be negative. I mean, generally speaking, for example, the cost of medical benefits is not coming in at that, at that low level of inflation. So, that's, that's an area of concern. Page eight is just putting the, this is, this is the overview of all of our operating funds, showing five years in the past and five years in the future. So, just putting this, you know, sharing this piece of information to put the context of the preliminary budget verification, how it fits from a longitudinal time perspective. And then we go into summary charts and the individual funds. I guess I'm looking at page 11, and the school district, as I've mentioned before, the difference between budget and actual is something that's always, you know, I remember one comment when I was making this kind of budget presentation, that when we adopt a budget, it'll be wrong right after we adopt it. Is that correct? I think the answer is correct. You know, a budget is just a plan. You don't know what is really going to happen. However, I think this budget is a little closer to what I think, to what I would reasonably expect. And the column H on page 11 indicates budget-to-budget change, column D to column G of actually a reduction of 0.9% from 24.42 to 24.213. So, we're basically, you know, looking at every category fairly closely and doing some reclassification of expenditures to be formally with Illinois Program and County Manual. And I'd call this a fairly tight budget. So, let's see where I want to say next. The, on page 26 of your materials, we get into a level of detail that a lot of boards really don't get into, except the level of new replacement equipment. And I decided that I would, you know, call me Mr. Transparency. Transparency is my middle name. Purchase services, supply of materials, capital outlay, these are all the justification statements that were provided by the principals of anybody who looks at developing a budget. I really have to commend and compliment the work of the administrative staff here. They took the process, they embraced it, they learned a little bit about a computer program that they had to grapple with, and I think that the results here are pretty good. I have some, there's, and let's say there's about five items in here, or, you know, maybe five or eight that are going, are already changed since this was distributed. You know, we've corrected some typos and identified some areas where we're going to change that budget. So, this is a, this is a fluid process, but I definitely would characterize the changes as non-substantive in the big picture. So, where this fits into the, into the whole process is that tonight I would welcome any, any questions or concerns about the detail. You know, and I don't know that I have an answer for everything, but I definitely want to learn what your questions or concerns are. I invite that between now and the June 16 board meeting. And even subsequent to that, questions about how the budget process is going, or any particular area of cost, your questions or concerns, welcome. The, something that I didn't express when I sent out these materials that I need to make very clear tonight, is that the September meeting is 28 days from the August board meeting, and that happens occasionally, once every three or four years. That means that we can't have you approve a tentative budget at the August meeting. It has to be approved before then. I'd like to emphasize that you can change anything about a tentative levy, you know, to go from tentative to final. I'm going to request that you approve a tentative budget at the June meeting. We're coming right up. I think that's a reasonable step to take because we've gotten property taxes. In the past, someone in my role would be very squeamish about making a budget recommendation without knowing what property taxes are. But that is final, so I think we can take that step. The Cook County has really done a great job of changing the schedule. If you go back three or four years, maybe four years ago, and then step back for the previous 15, those 15 years, we wouldn't be getting our, our final statement and being able to make these decisions until August, September, and even, I remember a worst-case scenario transpired, and they didn't give us property tax information until October. It was ridiculous.
Right.
So, now we're in, we're in good shape as far as knowing the biggest component of our revenue, so I feel fairly confident to make a tentative budget recommendation.
And you're going to make that in June?
Yes. And what it's going to look like, I have distributed to your, to your places this evening. So, this is actually on the form that goes to the Illinois State Board of Education, and that's what I would distribute for the June 16 meeting and say, this is what I'm asking you to approve. The first few pages of that, of that handout are, the first few pages are my own version because the state's version is ridiculously cumbersome to look at. There's so many blank lines. So, the first four pages, the five pages, don't have blank lines.
Okay.
But all the numbers are completely identical to what you're going to find when you start on this page. And this is the ISPEE Form 5036. And most school districts, if you ask, you know, if you did a bring up information request and said, "Give me your budget," that's what you get, the Form 5036. It's the ISPEE official form. So, at this time, I'm, I'm asking for your understanding of the need to have a tentative budget accepted by the board in an earlier timeframe than indicated. But I think the numbers have come together pretty well. And I wouldn't have this kind of confidence if we didn't have such good cooperation from the administrators that did put together their budgets. Are they perfect? No, they're imperfect, and, and I will be criticizing a couple things with individual, you know, administrators, but I hope they understand that it's all in the spirit of making it as high quality as possible. So, at this time, where am I in this list of things to talk about? Starting on page 54 of your materials, you're provided with a historical perspective so that you can go back to, I used to, I used to distribute this on legal-sized paper. It's a little hard to read because it's so small. If you really wanted to do it on legal-sized paper, I'd give it to you, so it gives you detail going back to F-line 1112, General Ledger line item by General Ledger line item. So, your, your depth of perspective on how costs align with the recommended budget, I think that kind of gives you about as much granularity as you might want. So, at this time, I guess I'll just open up the questions.
Questions for David.
David, with the move that we made this year on special education, from Ladsy staff to staff on our payroll, how has that, how has that worked out? Can you comment?
Well, I would certainly welcome Pam Short to make her, her own comment after I make mine. The, the place where these costs are identified in CapEx, and on page 11, shows us at 2.378 million in FY1314, and a recommended budget of 1.6401 million. So, I, and this has to be happy as the, as the fiscal, you know, tracker and trying to see how our budget can all fit together. Because when you've got a lot of fiscal stress in meeting that need, you have to balance the budget somehow. So, right now, I would say that our condition as a district in dealing with latency costs and placement, you know, outplacement of special education students is pretty near a best-case scenario. So...
I can just comment that having that additional support in the building all the time on a consistent basis has really helped us in returning students to the district. Not looking at Ladsy as their special education program, so many students, but of our private day students, I believe, starting this year, we have approximately 13 students in private days in the private day school settings, which can be all over the Chicago Lake area, which also increases transportation costs for Delta Six next year, starting this full year.
Yeah, and I just like that you do that. It's also, it's also helped us, I'd say, a lot, the line services, where, you know, outplays coming back as well. But we added, you know, additional support section of the building, and that was very helpful for a lot of our students.
Because social workers, that is a, can be a related service in special education, but is also a service that is for all students. So, that's been helpful in having those people on an ongoing basis in our buildings.
And it must be extremely helpful with scheduling, if Ladsy people aren't available, or just the consistency for the child, I think, is so important to see a familiar face. So, I appreciate that recommendation.
At this time of year, I've seen, I've seen numbers that would knock my socks off, and really, the trend line on this cost for school districts in general has been a pretty serious challenge for school districts. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see that number where it is, but I certainly wouldn't bet my mortgage that it's going to stay there. It's, it's one of those uncontrollables that we have to work with.
Right. That's one of those areas that you always have to approach with caution because of the tests students that enter the district, and you have that as part of their IEP, and of course, you have to continue that, or, you know, unfortunately, exacting students where they, I mean, or just setting to support their need, so.
Dave, where do you see, how can we see in this numbers, these numbers, the impact of what you just described verbally?
On page 11.
All right, can you?
We're on the line that has the title, tuition slash Ladsy.
Okay.
And other objects. In the past, but I've done some, some changing of the general ledger. We were out of compliance with the Illinois Program and County Manual in the manner in which we were recording that. We were putting it all in one, one head of account, so it's broken out now in the general ledger. But on this, on this presentation, other objects in tuition slash Ladsy are essentially the same.
Okay.
So, David, I just see something here that just kind of jumps out at me. We talked about six students maybe projected for next year at the private facility level. And I see in the transportation fund about $850,000 projected for next year. I'm just wondering how that, how that comes together?
Well, the $850,000, I can tell you right now, is going to come down for the, for the final budget. Some of these numbers, I've, I've made a projection, but I'm going to revise the budget, and I'll prize you of the revisions for the final budget. And that number, I, will come down. But the nature of that transportation cost is related to students for special education purposes on being transported. So, the fiscal year results are, are more favorable than that budget numbers justify, and that's why that number's going to come down. You'll be in better shape. I also hope to bring you some, and I hate to, I hate to say this, but our medical benefits experience is favorable year-to-date. I have not, I have not made a more optimistic projection on that, but as we get to the end of the fiscal year, we'll look at those numbers, and if, if there's a sun shining on that particular category, you'll see that one more contained than is in the short graph.
So, Pam?
We also need to transport students within the district who have IEPs.
I see.
And that's an individual decision made dependent upon a child's ability, that they want to be able to get themselves to and from school safely independently. So, dependent upon the child's needs, we have to look at that. Of course, all of our early childhood students, we wouldn't want them, you know, going across Valley One School independently, that would be, they all have transportation.
So, it, it goes well beyond the private facility students?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you. More questions for David?
Hey, we have another, another agenda here, if I could just jump ahead.
Yeah, please do.
For us, we're looking at transfer funds, and we can look at page 11. Now, actually, let's, no, that's not the right page. In the educational fund on page 14, in, in the upper section of the educational fund, where it says transfers in from the transfer, from the transfer fund, 1.533624, that won't be a reality without the board's action at the meeting. So, in order to make that actually finalized, board has to vote the approval of that transfer. Highly recommended because of the problem with your, maxing out your tax rates. As I showed you in the, in the levy, what was proposed, this was final. It played out the way we had hoped, but we levied so much in transportation only because of the circumstance of low EAV driving your tax rates up. It still, it still results in, in your ongoing homeowner paying only a 1.5% increase because of the, of the tax cap formula. And the reason why your, your tax revenues are going to go up is because of that $5.2 million of your profit. But I'll, I'll be asking for the board's favorable vote on a $1.533 million transfer from the transportation fund to the educational fund, so that we don't have a glaring surplus of dollars in the transportation fund. We really don't want to build up more than 100 to 150% of our year of expenditures in a lot of these other funds. And that, that would occur without this transfer. So, if there are any questions about that, I'd just like to hope the board will support that. And then, I have the...
The third item is proposals for some work that you're recommending in the schools here.
And this is, this is the spreadsheet that I'm working from. If anybody needs me to hand this to you, I can do that.
If you would.
So, you know, I'd like to just touch upon the merit of each one of these ideas. And this is unchanged from prior conversation with the board. In other words, this has been covered in the past. We're proposing to go forward with replacing a floor drain and do some concrete leveling at the central entrance to avoid flooding of classrooms. So, having flooding classrooms is not a good idea. Boiler automatic chemical supply feeds, Director of Buildings and Grounds, Bill Radke, feels that this is a deficiency. I support his recommendation. This, I'm sure Mr. Regan, who has a better feel than most of us about boiler and HVAC matters, can understand that there's an advantage to having this happen automatically rather than what we're doing currently, which is a manual. If you have a manual system, and it doesn't get done for whatever reason, then you're threatening the upkeep of your boilers that should be taking place. The truck for additional plowing and maintenance. We had a rough winter discussions with the Buildings and Ground staff, clarified that we're using personal vehicles for things that really shouldn't be used for school matters. And certainly, closing school is an agonizing decision, and we want to have the best chance possible to have school open. And having two plowing trucks will double our capacity. So, that's the rationale for that. Security cameras, both exterior and interior. I guess I would characterize the exterior as perhaps a priority one, and the interior maybe a priority two. And the reason why I made this heading of summer/fall is because we won't be asking for, you know, any kind of, where's those priority one items? I'd like to get those done this summer. And then, of course, the bottom, which is replace the carpet tile. But the security cameras can wait for the pleasure of the board. I know that this is a topic that has been brought up in relation to a couple of incidents where if you have a student injury, or a student who, in this case, was a special education student that left the building, and there was a lot of questions as to, well, why don't we have the ability to have surveillance and kind of backtrack as to what happened? That's pretty much a relatively normal part of a school district's infrastructure, and I'd like the board to anticipate a presentation on this. But I'm not asking for anything other than to give you an apprising, in fact, because this is a topic that's worthy of further conversation. And then, of course, the replacement of the central rooms five, six, and seven. I guess I should have put that up at priority one, because that's something that we're also recommending for the summer. And we have two quotations on this. One of this for $48,000, and another is for less than $13,000. So, I'd like to take the one for less than $13,000. And it's a contractor I was mentioning to Mr. Regan, and he was familiar with this contractor. He's got a good reputation there. He's got a reputation for doing things for a low cost. So, Johnson Flooring would be the company doing the PO for that. So, this is really, from my past experience, a pretty short list. As far as facilities improvements, I think your engaging of architect or consulting services of whatever manner to lead a multi-year planning effort will shed light on what is now a very short list. Something will become a long list, and it'll be up to the board to prioritize within a long list of options. But at this point, these are all the things that I would call to the board's attention for the near future.
Do you think that, in the context of that long-range facilities plan that you're talking about, with, you know, working with the architect on that, that it might make sense to take some of these things that are not as pressing, like the security cameras, and put them in that plan, try to prioritize them in that context? It just seems to me that if you can do that, you're going to maybe have a more comprehensive approach to spending your capital budget, and you really sort of allocate money optimally, and you really, you know, sort of think through all of the issues around the different projects.
And yes, I think that's a good idea. I think the board has to ask the question, you know, where do you want them being with security cameras?
I think you have to give direction to the architect. And so, I think that's a separate topic, the security cameras, security in general, long-term. Just talking about baby steps and a couple of cameras right at this point, but I think you have to look at a bigger picture of security. We talked a little bit, I talked to Jeff briefly about this, and David, we're in Mayberry here a little bit. In most schools, there are security, you know, secondary schools, there are security camps all over the place, is there inundated with it. And we probably, it's less here than I've ever seen, actually. And good for all of us here that we live in a community like this. However, better be safe than sorry. And I think we need to talk about it, the impact of it. And I definitely had a good point, you know, when you put in, any time you put in a security camera, you have a long term to keep it updated and the maintenance on it, and how many you put in, it could be never-ending. So, you have to look at the big picture. But what David's recommending is really some baby steps here, and a few cameras outside. And we can talk about that too, related to it.
Yeah, the only, the comment I wanted to make to Jeff is that this topic came up with Randy wanting it a year ago, so we...
Right. I'm familiar with that, but I just wanted to make a comment about that very point, which is Mr. Sellers alluded to the incident, I think, which sort of started the discussion about the cameras, where a child left the building, and no one knew about it, and they found him, you know, some distance away in the wintertime, I believe. But that would sort of, if you're going to have a camera that would catch something like that, you can't just have a camera. You actually need a person that's going to be monitoring the camera. And you might need, you're going to have to have cameras at all the exits in all the buildings. And so, that's no longer just a couple of things, you know, on a building. It's a major...
But Jeff, on the other hand, Griff makes a very strong point that we are Mayberry here when it comes to security. And I think that should...
We're fortunate to this day.
Yes, I think we have been very fortunate. And I think that there's a, in addition to the long-term concern that, is that we should have a quick assessment of where we are going into September, and make any needed Band-Aids or first aid type...
Baby steps.
Baby steps to get us to an acceptable minimum level.
It's a good discussion item, because I think the whole board needs to weigh in.
Well, I'd like, the other comment I'd like to make is that these cameras would not only catch, are needed not only to catch that child in the streets, but other things as well. It certainly would count.
There are many uses you have for cameras. You can catch thieves, you can do all kinds of stuff. But I just, I'm not arguing against cameras, per se. I'm just arguing that it, you know, it behooves us to think it through and have a rational plan rather than just sort of doing stuff.
We've been thinking it through for a couple of years.
We wouldn't have anybody watching cameras. I mean, I think schools recognize fully that studies have shown, even if you assign somebody that job responsibility...
You're going to phase out.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't match their eyes.
What that implies is that the child would not be stopped from going outside. So, we shouldn't use that as a sort of an example, or something that would be prevented, I think.
If the child, detection of a child is that they're gone, you would be able to, as soon as it's detected, you could immediately start reviewing video and saying, okay, well, let's backtrack on these cameras. And you're in an emergency response mode, and the cameras are helping you do that. I think, you know, my own experience is that after cameras became a part of the school operation, I would get reports of just how useful they were. And so, I think it is a decision and a step that won't be regretted. But at this point in time, what I would really like to do is, for the June meeting, recommend everything but the cameras for board action, as far as, you know, taking a vote and giving us the green light to move ahead on everything but the cameras.
But also have a discussion of where we're headed in that direction.
Well, yeah, like I'm saying, that...
Without action.
During the summer, contractors, you know, line up their work. And so, we always say to the board, make all your facilities improvement decisions in November, get the bids back in February, get all the work done over the summer. That is a model that doesn't apply to cameras. Camera vendors will do the work anytime. So, the board can, you know, put this on, at a pace to deliberate over the strengths and weaknesses at your convenience. But I really want to get some direction from the board regarding these other items, so that we can, you know, hit the ground running for these things that need to get done over the summer.
David, where does, I mean, these are relatively modest amounts of money, all of them. Where do they fit in our capital budget at the moment? I mean, I presume we have the money for each and every one of them, and...
Well, I've put $600,000 into the capital. I'll lay, the way the fiscal year works is that all work in progress over a summer, as of June 30th, gets posted to the fiscal year just prior to June 30th. So, I'm making the assumption that the board will look at some significant projects this fall, make some decisions, get some bids out, and then that $600,000 will cover not only these improvements, but also the summer-to-date work up to June 30th. But an auditor, and this isn't my idea, it's the independent auditor that makes the decision, that they look at pay requests and the timesheets of the workers, and then they determine how much work has been done prior to the date. So, for example, if we decide to do blithe windows, blithe roof, paving, a number of the projects that are kind of out there, I'm assuming that we would have checks cut to contractors up to about $600,000 by June 30th.
And are we doing everything on an accrual basis now versus cash?
Well, you know, what I just described is...
Accrual?
It is, well, that's more of a cash basis, because you're actually looking at a snapshot of when the work was done. The things that are accrued, you know, and it's more accurately termed a modified accrual, are revenues. So, I mean, revenues are definitely a focus, and accounts payable, where there's, you know, some things that are struggling out there, that are going to be pulled back to the prior fiscal year, because they were definitely related to activity in the prior fiscal year. So, either way, we'll be 100% GASB compliant with regard to those practices. And we're doing what every other school district does that's under a modified accrual, which is for GASB compliant.
David, the priority one here, this concrete replacement at the central entrance, is that going to alleviate the flooding in rooms five, six, and seven?
Yes.
Is that directly connected?
Yes. And every time we've had a contractor look at that entrance, they all kind of shake their heads and say, well, you've got this sloping of your concrete, it's deflection. So, we need to fix it. So that, but it's, I don't want to add, we tried to rod out all the way, and we weren't able to get as far as we want to. So, we may have to have some communications with the buildings on the other side preparing this whole thing. So, while we put in a new drain, we're going to make this, we're going to get the job done fully, and hopefully be resolving the drainage system all the way out to the street, and make sure that we're able to show that the line is clear, and that we have no backups. And then, I mean, the people that have been working in those classrooms are, you know, they're concerned about mold. And, you know, mold is one of those words that you don't want to, you have to be careful. Most mold is no more toxic than dirt, you know, it's just, it's not a health issue. However, there are people that have allergic reactions to mold, and it is a workplace issue potentially. So, you want to have a classroom environment, in this case, without carpet, just tile, and we'll be mitigating any risk of complaint about mold.
So, problem we want to solve, so moving forward, you'll reprioritize these, and they'll come up in the June 16th vote.
Yeah, I'll just be asking for the board's approval of all of these, except for security cameras.
Very good.
I think going on with the camera discussion, I feel interior cameras is a totally different issue than exterior, because it's also a psychological effect in the building. I've worked in buildings that have different systems, and we're using positive-based rewards, and how does this play into our strategic plan with how our students engage in behavior, and positive behavior? And do they feel watched? And does the staff feel watched? And how do we, you know, it's fine to incorporate, but are we doing it well, and in a way that's healthy for everyone? So, that's something I'd like to see in a plan.
Any other questions for David? All right, turning the meeting over.
I like how I'm passing it down.
Perfect. You're still there.
Yes.
Sherry really wrecked the clock.
I know, it scared me.
You've got to get going, that's right.
Moving on to the policy committee, we're going to start with an update from Mr. Tufano about the Technology Policy Development Subcommittee, in specific three policies, the Acceptable Use Policy for Staff and Students, the BYOT Policy for Staff and Students, and the Student Data Privacy Policy.
Good evening. The Technology Student Committee met last Wednesday, and one of the agenda topics included a discussion on needed policy related to acceptable use, information and data security, personal devices, or bring-your-own technology by staff and students. We also talked about some much-needed departmental procedures, standard operating procedures, just to provide guidance for the technology staff as they're working within the department. And also presented to the group a variety of other topics. It's been a topic that's been on our agenda for, we've been revisiting it. It's just a matter of, it's finally kind of coming to the forefront as we've taken care of other larger initiatives as well. Policy is, and then the procedure associated with it, is a very important component that will assist us in moving forward and implementing technologies and resources and applications and online services especially. But over the past couple of months, I've been researching, looking really nationwide for a variety of different types of policies. One of the big, one of the hotter topics right now, and I know it's been brought to the school more in the past, is about student data, just information security in general. There's not a lot of policies in place, but have found some, some school districts that have implemented policies, so we have some sample policies on that as well. Also, we were provided from district leadership, a sample Acceptable Use Policy from one of the law firms, which was very large, really consolidated a lot of other policies. And after initially really reviewing that by the committee, it's a bit cumbersome in 20 pages. So, what we've, what we decided to do, or the recommendation from the Tech Steering Committee, is that since we don't necessarily need the entire group to kind of sit down and go through these policies, was to develop a subcommittee, just of a few people. And what we do is we prioritize, because we, there are, there's a list of potential policies that we might want to implement. Some districts I've found have implemented, related to not only acceptable use, but a lot about process and implementing security and disaster recovery, where they've actually decided to make it part of policy. But to really look at, is that something we need to do here, is it, do we want to do here? And then, forward that draft documentation to the policy committee for then their final review and adoption. So, we'd be, again, identifying what would be high need and prioritizing, and obviously bringing those first. We'd be reviewing some sample policies... We'd be reviewing some sample policies from other school districts, and also administrative procedures, which are going to provide more of that detail in implementing the policy. But again, that smaller group will be able to sort through, edit, develop draft versions, and then provide something for the, you know. So as far as, you know, ready to move forward and then bring forward the acceptable use, the BYOT, student data, it's very much still in its draft form and review form at this point.
Did you have any volunteers for that subcommittee?
Yes. Right now, then Mary Rose volunteered as well, did Dave Varzati. So right now with that, we're going to try to schedule that group to meet more frequently than the Tech Steering Committee, then also report our findings back to the Tech Steering, and then ultimately back to the Policy Committee.
So, Don, maybe three months ago, one of your members got up and spoke and addressed the Board about an application, or some applications or software that were of concern...
Yes.
...of his. Can you, can you talk about what has been done in that interim time to understand this issue and to address it?
Well, in the interim, the company itself did remediate some of the issues, not all. And I think that as a resource, the resource in particular, I think it really needs to be evaluated before we continue to renew it again.
Yeah.
At the same time, as a district, we also need to implement some type of a, and it's one of the, was one of the policies or procedures, more of a procedure, to put in place. We have a process by which resources that utilize what's called PII, Personally Identifiable Information, of students and staff, that there's a review process before adoption. And that review process, you know, potentially from, might be initiated by a staff member, it may go to a building principal, escalate it to curriculum, and then, and then the technology, where the technology component is really looking at the security aspects of the service. We also need to do a level of audit of existing services that we use to make sure that they're up to some security levels.
So to recap that, what you just said, are we in any better position now than we were three months ago when that was brought to our attention on this matter? Or do we need to be in a better position? Can you really talk a little bit more in detail on this?
Sure, I think we definitely need to be in better position. But I think having that, having that review, having a process in place and knowing what we're going to look at, what is going to be our criteria. Also, when we import data, when we port in data, import data from our systems into systems outside the organization, do we have agreements set up that ensures how that information that we imported into those systems, how it's going to be used? So that's setting up vendor agreements. Another aspect of it is, is looking at the way we, the types of data that we export, for instance. What has been commonly used is, from like a username standpoint, involves the student's name, which is more identifiable, as opposed to maybe a student ID number. So where students are accessing systems now using a combination of maybe their first and last name, we move to where it's less identifiable individually so that they're logging in with just a, with their student ID number.
Don, would it be fair to say that some of the things, well, that Randy is asking will be addressed by the Subcommittee?
Yes.
And Dave Varzati, who was the person who addressed it to the Board, he's...
He's on that committee?
Yeah, yeah. So he's going to obviously, you know, try to implement some of his, something that he's passionate about.
I'm just trying to get a sense of, are we at some risk? And if so, how quickly do we move?
I think, I don't believe we're at a higher risk in terms of vulnerability with data that, like social security numbers and our student information. I don't believe we're with those systems. We're looking at really what is best practice. And again, do we have agreements established with vendors on whatever data we do provide them, how are they going to use it?
Any other questions? Nope?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our last item, the first reading for the IASB Press Update 88. At this time, I ask Board of Education to review the policies from Press Update 88 in your packet. This is your first reading opportunity. Dr. Sharmel Lewis and I met and reviewed the policies and all these suggested updates, and they're all standards based on legal changes from the Illinois Association of School Boards. I request that the Board of Ed review the policies. Send me any questions or comments prior to the next committee meeting on July 7th. On July 7th, we can discuss any comments or suggestions related to these policies, and then progress them for a second reading, and then for final approval at the July 16th Board of Ed meeting. There, just of note, there is only one policy, 5:330, which the first part is actually not applicable because it has to do with sick days and it has something more due to our contract. So that part is not recommended that we would adopt. So Juanita, will you please post these policies from Press 88 on our website?
Yes.
And we will take, tentatively approved at the July 16th Board of Education meeting.
So Linda, will you...
July 21st.
Oh.
I think there was a mistake.
Okay. Was it on the...
Your committee, right.
July 21st, thank you.
Right.
So Linda, in general, when you review these updates, will you let us know when something is not boilerplate? I mean, because I, reading through these, it seems like most of the time, they're just boilerplate, but occasionally they're not. And we sort of let us, is your intention to let us know, like, oh, this is unusual?
Absolutely. I will, I will flag anything, highlight to you guys ones that I specifically would want your, you know, feedback on. I would welcome feedback on any of them, as this is the first reading, but...
Let me ask you a question about the one you're not recommending for first reading because it's CBA-related.
I'm not recommending it. I'm not not recommending it for first reading. I'm just mentioning, in the first reading, that's the one that has the CBA.
Right. And again, I've started to assemble a list of policies as they come up that are CBA-related so they can be dovetailed with the agreement as we go forward or...
Right.
Okay, so everybody under, okay.
Yep.
So that's what you're continuing with?
Yeah, that, yes, absolutely, continuing with that. And I just want to make sure that if, when you are reading that policy, reviewing that one, you know, you know...
That it's CBA-related?
Yes, that it's certainly not something we would adopt since it has something with our contract.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? At this point, I'll just mention the future meeting dates. June 16th, 2015, our next regular business meeting, 6:30 PM in the Hauser LRC. July 7th, 2015, Committee of the Whole Meeting at 7:00 PM in the Hauser LRC. The agenda says 6, but I believe it's actually 7. And then July 21st, 2015, our regular business meeting at 6:30 PM in the Hauser LRC. And I believe I have to adjourn the meeting. I don't know the protocol for that, so...
You say the meeting is adjourned.
The meeting is adjourned.